Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. This is the Wasika School Board regular monthly business meeting. It's Thursday, the 23rd of October, 2025, 5:30 PM. And we're in the central building, second floor conference room. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, certified of the United States of America. Thank you, the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
A second.
Okay, motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Recognition of visitors, don't see any, but a welcome to our high school students that are with us tonight. Thank them for coming. Moving on to payment of claims. I've had a chance to review the claims, had a couple of questions for Sarah, which she answered. And I thank her for that. And so I will recommend that we pay for the month of September. Accounts payable, $1,776,011.34. And September payroll of $992,597.04.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to approve payment of claims. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Motion for the consent agenda.
All motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving right along to our information items. Dr. Hutsford.
Well, thanks. Good evening, everybody. And as my report for this evening, I have a presentation to put up on the board. I've got quite a few things I wanted to share with you this evening. So going a little more in slideshow mode tonight to be able to talk through what we've got going on for here, the October board meeting, if you go to the next section there. So we think about the areas of learning for all. You know, we're seeing encouraging trends. The DAC committee got to see some of our results here a few weeks ago. And we're working on supporting student performance and the growth, but keep preparing for future enhancements in our curriculum. We're seeing some growth in our fall assessments, the effectiveness of our instructional strategies. Starting to see some differential learning opportunities happening more for our students and doing some targeted instruction. It's pretty exciting to see that happening. Currently piloting four new math curriculums. District adoption is hoping to be planned for the fall of 2026. So school board review of those, of that recommendation will come next spring. Think about what's going on for our math curriculum. And then we're right in the middle of, I'm right in the middle of my staff listing sessions for the fall. Had a chance to talk to staff so far at Hartley and the intermediate school, junior, senior high. And the central building programs are scheduled here for the upcoming weeks. Lots of feedback we're gathering from our staff. Everything from, you know, how are you feeling about the calendar and the Labor Day start? To here's what's going on with our buildings, to here's what's going on with substituted things we're thinking about. So lots of great ideas that our staff are sharing in those listing sessions. I think there's some advantage of that familiarity comfort now of having been here a number of years that we're having some real impactful conversations. I think honest and really engaging in some of the things they're seeing at the buildings. And it's been a really positive experience. So continuing to see that for that. Let's go to the next one, Amy. Continuing in that learning for all strategic plan, really working hard on expanding career pathways and some support systems for students. Right now, I mentioned this to a committee the other evening. Wasika is part of a steering committee, working on implementing some additional robotics curriculum. It's called XRP, which is First Robotics Product. Working with the Perkins grant funding to identify some other increased career and tech pathways for our students. Potentially partnering with some of our local districts around us to identify some more opportunities to allow students to take some of those classes that we may not have quite as high of enrollment for. So we make sure we can still offer those classes for students. So some exciting things in the process this school year to hopefully plan out some different opportunities for kids as registration comes out for the fall of 2026, for that opportunity. We've had a history of a really strong robotics program here that tends to be really dependent on staffing and different opportunities you have. So this XRP program combined with some of these Perkins dollars could help us still offer those opportunities for students, even if staff had changes over time, as it does. We're also working hard with the Minnesota Department of Education to implement Minnesota's MTSS, Multi-Tier Systems of Support. Dr. McGuire is leading that with our principals and our other administrators, talking, making sure that every student gets what they need, academic and behaviorally. And we're meeting roughly monthly with our partners, with the Minnesota, or the South Central Service Cooperative as part of their Compass program to help us make sure that our systemic supports are in place for kids. What we're finding is our buildings are doing an excellent job already of supporting kids at multiple levels of support. But what we can do aligned from the K-12 process can continue to improve. So that maybe Justin's using the same language with his seventh and eighth graders as Ben's using with the second and third graders. So that we continue to create that continuity for kids going forward. So pretty positive things moving forward in that area.
Do we have a local committee for that, the MTSS here?
Yeah, it's district administration.
Okay.
Yep. And we received a grant that pays for some of our coordinator this year and some of the opportunities to be in these meetings. There is some community engagement part of it that comes further down the process. Yeah. In the community engagement area, you know, we know that strong schools obviously need strong connections. Continuing to work to increase the meaningful opportunities for a community to engage with our schools. Earlier this week, we had our Fall College and Career Fair, lots of post-secondary institutions, local employers. Students have a chance to get through their juniors and seniors. And Alan, I don't know if you had a chance to go to that?
Yes.
Yeah, so a great opportunity to get to see what could come next for some people. Just finishing up, as I mentioned this previously, a communication survey. Got a solid number of responses there, how we can continue to get better at sharing information. I just was looking at some of the high-level details. I'm going through some of the data quote by quote here that I'll present to you here in the coming weeks. But about 94% of our respondents, just 259 responses, 94% satisfied with how we're being communicated from the school. You receive, you feel like you receive the information you need from the school and district. Roughly right around 93, 94% for both of those questions. And for the most part about just, what, 96% said they get usually timely or better communication from the school district. So positive, but things we could do better. So there's things like the district website could use some growth. We could use some, maybe more district newsletter presence from a district perspective. Some of the comments in summary, I just pulled a little, a couple of themes out, that there's multiple channels of communication, so families are appreciative receiving that. Responsive and supportive staff and pretty consistent communication. Some of the challenges, centralizing and clarity of information. That the exact same thing I just said also works as a challenge because we have multiple formats that we're communicating with and can be overwhelming or confusing for families when you've got one social media, this building and that, and their building. Website isn't maybe necessarily be used as well as it could. So we can get better with the clarity of information and consolidating. And then again, making sure that we're communicating timely and accurately with some accurate information. So there's lots of things that we pulled out that could help us get better along the way. About 100 responses in each positive and challenges that we're going through right now and look at them piece by piece. And seeing, okay, if it was dissatisfied, but you did, what feedback did you give? You were satisfied, what feedback did you give? So we can make some changes. One of the things we're doing already is working on improving our website, kind of help support that digital presence to help families easily access information and resources. I've been working with Aptige, the website company. They've got a chatbot that we can put on our website that is going to be more intuitive and help people with searches to find what they need on the website. But stake that back a step, we turned it on, we asked it some questions, and we helped determine what we need to do to improve the website before we can turn it on because we don't want to just frustrate people with things they can't find. So working through that process, hopefully by early November, we have that up and running. And then coming up here in November, we're also starting a little bit of a process. Sarah and I have been talking about doing some school finance learning sessions, having just some open opportunities for folks to come in if they want to hear about how does school funding work? How does the levy process work? And we'll film them and we'll put them on our website. So if folks can't make it, they can watch it at a later date and go from there. We'll probably do two or three of those over the course of the next several months, just to kind of walk people through how schools truly are funded. Because as you remember, our survey, we looked at the school perception survey. And people do want to support their schools, but they want to know where their money is being, how it's being used. And we talked in our facility committee meeting a couple of minutes ago, you can only spend a dollar one time. And so people want to know how we're spending their dollars. And I feel really good about what we're doing in Wasika, but we want to communicate that continued. So looking forward to those conversations too. More information on those to come. Go to the next one, Amy. Okay. Area of effective and efficient use of operations. Obviously, responsible stewardship of our dollars is really important. And this is an area that I think as a district, we're really excelling in. Our negotiations process is going very well. Our long-term facility plan is continuing to develop strategies for maintaining buildings. And then speaking of that, you know, we've talked, we've been talking about staffing considerations and making sure that we're allocating staff to where we need the support the most. So do we need some extra? Right now, quite frankly, we need a little extra support in some of our building grounds and beautification of our district. And so reallocating some staff to be able to improve that area. Fortunately, our enrollment has landed right where we thought it was going to for the fall. So instructional staff, you don't need much movement there, but some of our other areas, we can continue to support what needs to happen. And then something that Sarah and I are very close to a daily basis is sustainable budget planning and creating that multi-year financial projection. The one thing I want to highlight is bond refunding. If you go to the next slide there, Amy. So we have an opportunity right now to experience some savings for our community on a building bond refund process. And what it is, so this is our high school bond from 2015, when that election took place. And this bond has reached a maturity date where they have, it's called call dates. And it's February of 2026 is that. That must be the 10-year mark, February of 2016, when the bonds were originally sold, where that call date can happen. And just like you would with your house, if you can experience some savings by refinancing, once the bond reaches that call date, reaches that maturity date, then you have the opportunity to, what's called refund, which is essentially refinance those bonds to experience savings. Depending on when you call the bond, or we're going to say paid off in full, each year's interest rate is slightly different. And right now, we already have a pretty low interest rate on that bond going forward. But starting in 2026, we have the opportunity to experience about seven years' worth of the bond repayments through 2033 or 2034, 34? Remember, I thought you had, so eight years roughly worth of the payments that we could refund and refinance and save our district some money. Because once you get past that, you've basically got to the point where you've paid off enough of the interest at your DAC principal. So those last couple of years of bond payments, doesn't it make sense to refund those? Because those rates already are so low. So why refund? Well, as interest rates vary, we can essentially refinance to get some more favorable terms. Right now, Ellers is projecting that if we do a partial refund, which you'll be asked to do a resolution on here later in the action items, with a partial, I think it says partial or full on the resolution to give us maximum flexibility. But if we do a partial refund, we're going to experience savings potentially between $300,000 to $400,000 for our community over the life of the rest of those bond payments. So pretty significant dollar values that could support our community. What is, what is really important to note is the community directly benefits when you do a refinance or refund like this. When savings are returned, they're returned directly to the taxpayers. So they do not come back to the district, they do not go back to our general fund. They go directly back to our taxpayers through future levy reductions. So we keep our existing commitments and people save money over the next 10 years of the bond. So the draft timeline is in your bond, is in your Google, in your Google Drive tonight. But it starts with the proposed parameter resolution. It says, if we can save this much money, start the process. You can begin, you can sell bonds anytime 90 days before the call date or after that. So that's why we're doing it now, even though I said February call date, because we're now 90 days before that process. So the parameters that we're proposing tonight, based on Eller's recommendation, is if we can exceed $200,000, we should proceed. And so that's what I'm going to ask you to approve this evening. We will come back in December, let me start that back. Ellers will be here at the November board meeting, and they'll take you through a pre-sale presentation. So you know what that looks like, what the actual savings is going to be projected to be. And then in December, you will actually take action to authorize the sale of the bonds. So authorizing the resolution tonight does not commit you to the full process. It just directs Sarah and I to work with Ellers to begin the process of refunding those bonds. Based on the recommendation, and Erin and Jody will show this with you in November. But based on the recommendations, they're expecting more savings than that, than 200,000, maybe 300,000 to 400,000. But they're concerned if we set that parameter too high and we can't achieve that, then that costs us some months down the road. And the closer we get to that, you know, you think about the principal interest as you're paying on your, on a mortgage, as you get closer and closer to that level, you save less and less of the interest dollars. So we, it doesn't really, and we're already pretty low with our interest rates. So it doesn't behoove us to wait, based on their advice at this time. But you get an opportunity to approve that in December, we do the final sale. And then that again, directly goes back to our taxpayers to refinance that. Before we move on, any questions on that particular idea? It'll come up with a resolution again later too, but.
I'll just add in that we, the finance committee kind of went through that same thing of what he just said and talked to Ellers and got to ask a bunch of questions. And it's clear enough, but I mean, we kind of went into more detail burden as well, so.
Okay. All right. Last.
Can you refinance bonds more than once?
No.
Just one time?
I suppose theoretically, and what we've been told is it doesn't happen more than once because you wouldn't experience those savings any better than that going forward. Because the savings that we reported to you, that parameters, that includes basically all the refinancing costs that come with the refinancing, any kind of loan or bond like you normally would have. So if you were to do it again three or four years from now, you wouldn't because you wouldn't experience the savings that would be, make it worthwhile.
Okay.
Yeah. So it's really a one-time thing, for the most part. Yep, good. Okay. Any other questions on that? Want to cut anybody off? Okay. Ensuring safe and welcoming environment is our last strategic area. Our current focus really is working on a building condition assessment. We've completed some evaluations with our partners ICS and our facility committee. Actually had a nice conversation about that this evening, talking about moving forward for what we're going to do next with buildings. And more to come on that in the coming months, because I know that's going to be a lengthy process as we get through all those big books of how the facilities are doing. And then I said we're prioritizing our grounds maintenance, you know, really looking at how do we go into this winter and prepare for the spring to make sure we've got nice-looking sites? Because that's something that, you know, we've had the, we can do better with. So we're prioritizing that. And then getting into winter weather planning, making sure everything's up and running. And we certainly have needed the heat this week. And as we get into, it's the end of October, so no surprise there. I'm hoping we don't have any snow in the near future, but we're prepared just if we are. So getting into that area there. The next one? Okay. Let's see. That might have been, is that my last one? Yep. And then the last one is just the strategic plans, opening it up. Oh, here you go. I knew there was a little more slide on here. So the other thing that will come up tonight is assurance of compliance. And the assurance of compliance with federal and state law, that's something you see every year. You'll be asked to essentially acknowledge it tonight. It's a public comment that says that, yes, we follow all of our state and federal laws when it comes to special education services, privacy and data security, employment and workplace things, all the things that we do. We acknowledge that. And then I'll submit that to the state here coming up. But I think it has to be done by November 15th, that's why it's usually on the October board meeting. I think, I know the law changed a few years ago, that no longer does the board chair have to sign off on that. Now it's the superintendent, does it all online. But I just think it's good practice for you and our community to know that, yes, we are continuing to do that. We're in compliance with everything. And then SIPA, that's the Children's International Protection Act. This is one that we do every so often to just again acknowledge that we're in compliance with this act. We, you know, our filtering systems and digital citizenship education, and really make sure we meet all those requirements and which helps preserve our E-rate funding, then going on that. So those will come up as acknowledgements on your action items, but I wanted you to know that's what those were, that's what those were about. I think that's the last one, right, Amy? Okay, very good. And then our strategic roadmap, obviously basing the conversation tonight on those strategic priorities. So I'd stand for any further questions? Otherwise, that's my report for this evening.
Do you want to talk at all about what happened out of WIS on Tuesday? And kind of give a synopsis of what happened?
Well, yeah, I mean, I can. At the end of the day, I think I want to say our staff is amazing. And Don Hutmeyer and the teachers and the support staff at that building just hopped right into it. About nine o'clock in the morning, the construction site across the street that's working on the apartment complex is the marketplace there, they dated a power line, underground power line that was serving, servicing the WIS building. Fortunately, nobody was in the hole. Unfortunately, nobody was hurt because it would have been pretty dangerous if anybody was, was too close to that line when it got hit. And so we were without power for the rest of that day at the intermediate school. I think it was a series of probably four or five phone calls between Mr. Hutmeyer and I and the staff. And food service jumped right up, and we're going to make a bunch of sandwiches. And how are we going to support our students? Because we knew that the best place for students is still in school, as opposed to, you know, making the rest of the day just an off day. And so we were able, teachers were able to finish their lessons through the morning, albeit without internet or power, through the morning, and they had lunch. And then they walked over to, one of those few times when it's a really good advantage that those two buildings are on separate power sources. So they were able to walk across the parking lot to finish their day in the pack. It was extremely evident that we're prepared and we can deal with those types of situations. Now, it wasn't anything emergency from a safety perspective, but certainly was a, what are we going to do? And there was no panic, no concern. Staff handled it. I had a chance to go over and see the kids, a little as they were coming over to the intermediate school. And other than it being a pretty windy day and they got blown over there, they ended up being a good, and it was different, but a good day. And that's just a, I think it's a testament to what we do as a school district, that we just get through the day to support kids and support our families. And if it had not been on the next day, that might have looked different. Whether we would have had to have kids in there or not. But as of, because they, important note, because I've been in a building that didn't happen once, they had bathrooms. So that was really important. They would have finished the morning there with running water and such. And so that was good. And again, the kitchen staff just served what, they made the food the next day they were going to make that day and just did a great, great job. So it's one of those things that you would never hope to have happened, but not a crisis.
Okay, thank you. Sarah?
All right. I'll start my report with the enrollment summary. I see that's first in your packet. For September and October, our student information system shows 1,692 students for both those months. We did include in our budget a projection or an estimate of 1,690 students. So we're well within that frame. And we'll continue to monitor that as we move throughout the school year. You can see that we are down a bit from the 24, 25 school year. That was anticipated, just with a large outgoing high school class and a smaller incoming kindergarten class this year. Any questions on enrollment?
Do we have any anticipation on what the kindergarten class is going to look like next year?
Yes, we do. I don't know it off the top of my head.
Yeah.
Is it little still? Is it small?
It's similar.
Okay.
Yeah, all about 100 is kind of where we're tracking.
Okay.
Then if we look at the expenditure report for September, the general fund overall bottom line looks fairly well in line with where we have been the last couple of years. So I think that is to be expected and as planned. When I look at the remaining funds, the only thing I wanted to bring up and point out was in our custodial fund. You can see that the expenses year-to-date as a percent of budget are significantly higher than prior years. And that fund is where we used to house the funding for the Wasika County Collaborative for Families. As of July 1st, 2025, we transferred the fiscal host ownership to Min Prairie. And as such, we transferred the cash that we had on hand or that we were holding for the county collaborative to Min Prairie. So that's why those expenses look so high year-to-date. Then I will take you to the revenue report. Again, general fund overall looks fairly in line, year-to-date as a percent of budget with where we have been in prior years. Just a couple of things that look odd. Property taxes and federal aid dollars are showing a zero year-to-date. That is pretty common. Our first property tax payment for the fiscal year comes in October. I think it's anticipated to hit our bank tomorrow. And federal aids, generally, we don't start drawing on those until we get the prior year audit and expenses all tied out. So then we'll look to draw down some of our federal grant funds in November or December. And the only other thing that looked a little high to me there was student activities. But that is different year over year. It just fluctuates depending on the fundraisers planned and what those student activities have in progress at any given point in the year. Any questions on the financial reports?
All right, thank you. Moving on, committee, board member reports. I think Scott is itching to hell to start us off.
All right. So I was part of the finance meeting, and we discussed the bond refunding discussions and the call dates. So that'll be coming in the resolution. And then we had facilities today, and we're looking at, we discussed the facilities report by ICS a little more that we got. And then looking at next steps and what we're going to start looking at going forward for facilities coming up. I did miss a superintendent evaluation, so I don't have a report on that. That's it?
Thank you.
Sure, I did attend the superintendent meeting. No, it was very good. We went over the strategic goals for this current year and the things we're working on. And Dr. Hutsford alluded to those in his presentation a little bit ago. Professional growth and development. The staff really kind of reflected on the first week of school, well, prior to the first week of school, all the training and stuff that they went through. Was it good? Was it bad? Did they like the layout and stuff like that? The speakers and all that stuff. So it sounds like they were pretty satisfied. And then policies, we'll discuss those in a little bit. Talked about curriculum and things like that. And, and then we did have a DAC meeting. And I think I talked about that already, but yeah, we looked at test scores and things like that.
All right, thank you.
I was at a finance committee meeting, which Scott talked about, and policy, which Ann already covered. The only other one is back actually in September, since our last meeting, I was part of a personnel committee, went through various things, nothing of significant note. Those were the meetings that I had and things to report.
Okay. Mr. Preep?
The only meeting I've been to is the facilities meeting, and Scott talked about that. But I guess what we talked about somewhat is in creating a vision for where we want to go with facilities and keep on working on public input so that when we do it, we do it right and the public is behind us, so.
Yeah. I'll third that. So yeah, facilities, DAC, like Ann said, here we discuss some math and reading scores and just the different ways of testing that they do for that. And, you know, possibility, the ways of working and improving that. As far as the facilities, I agree, that's the main point in our conversation is we want to make sure that everything that we do for the future plan is, got the community input and a lot, not just... community input and a lot, not just a quick fix-it plan, but a long-term to, to fit us for where we need to be for long future, so.
Okay, thank you. Melissa?
I had the superintendent evaluation meeting, which like Anne said, Dr. Hesbit kind of covered all of that tonight in his presentation. And then the personnel committee, just a couple of things that we talked about. We talked about our website and kind of the AI answer tool that, that we talked about earlier as well, ask questions and it'll spit out an answer for you. Talked about Ignite readings, a reading intervention tool. And that's pretty much it. I wasn't able to make it to the finance meeting, so.
Okay, thank you. Alan?
I have a few things. The band is still very hard at work, even though our outdoor season ended about 11 days ago. We are still rehearsing for the 50th anniversary of the indoor, so we are very excited for that. Our first choir concert is this coming Monday. And we are also prepping for an MSU honor choir on November 6th in Mankato, which we are also very excited for. And the fall play rehearsals are finally underway. Something to look forward to. That's all I got.
Okay. No football?
I was told by Mrs. Nelson to stay away from the sports.
Well, we'll have to talk to her. Yeah. Okay, you want to start, do recognitions or thank yous?
Yep.
Please?
I want to recognize everybody that's involved in the fall sport this year for all of their hard work and dedication that they put into it. And I know that football is still going on, but I also still want to thank, give, recognize them for how much hard work that they've put in for the season.
Okay, thank you. Melissa?
Did anybody hear how cross-country ended up today? Okay, so just kind of waiting on news there, I guess. And then I hopped into Four Seasons this afternoon and if you haven't been in there lately, stop in, they've got a ton of Blue Jay stuff. So in addition to our school store, there's a lot of options there.
I think we covered it earlier, but I kind of added my list, just thanks for the, the jump into redirecting all the kids yesterday or the other day with the power situation and handle them.
Okay. All right, Charlie?
Well, I've been missing in action, so.
Okay, all right. Grant?
I think the things I had were mostly repeats. As Alan said, the indoor, I'll just add in the dates was the 7th, 8th, and 9th. And the play dates were the 14th and 15th. And I was also going to recognize as Eric and Theron did, the, all the work that WIS did to adjust when things happen, so thank you.
Yeah, I, I attended conferences at the high school, junior high, senior high, and it was very smooth and nice. So just a thank you to all the teachers that were there early in the morning at 7:30 when I was there, right? They were happy to talk and chat and so a thank you to all of them that were there.
I don't know how many people have been following what's going on at the Blue Jay Blast, but they've put some things out on Facebook about some of the items that are going to be there, so I hope everybody attends and, and the public gets out there to support the district. It'll be a fun day and, and night again, so looking forward to that.
Okay.
Saturday, November 22, right?
Yep, yep.
All right. I'm just gonna say thank you again to the, everybody out at the intermediate school. I, I was heading out that way to do my usual helping kids with math, so I walked right into the school less than an hour after the power went out. And I was there for probably, I don't know, hour, hour and a half. And I was so impressed how everybody, everybody handled that situation. I mean, organized, teachers were still teaching, kids were still learning, the cooks were on the fly, they went from hot lunch to cold lunch. Like Eric said, he talked to Mr. Hutmeyer a number of times and John was right on top of everything, talked to Ryan West, they had custodian there, he had the generator up and running right away. I didn't know that there's emergency lighting in that building. It only runs when the generator's on, so. And I went in the classroom I normally go into and the teacher didn't miss a beat. We had one light in the middle of the room and a couple flashlights, but we, she didn't miss a beat with teaching math and the kids were great, they were well behaved and it was just, it was very impressive to see how the whole situation was handled because it was something nobody would expect. It happened just like that and they had to deal with it all day, so hats off to everybody at WIS. Okay, we'll move on to action items. Motion for item A.
I make a motion that we approve the accepted, acceptance of received gifts and donations.
Second. Roll call, Amy, please?
Alyssa Bowers?
Yes.
Darren Gruger?
Yes.
Scott Demel?
Yes.
Anne Margot?
Yes.
Grant Shepherd?
Yes.
Charlie Greve?
Yes.
Dave Dunn?
Yes. Motion for item B.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2025 fall lane changes.
Second.
Okay. All in favor of that motion or in any discussion? Any comments? No?
Just continue to, to be impressed with our staff, continuing with their work to make themselves better and improve their work, so thanks for that.
Okay. Can you, can you tell us approximately how many of our teaching staff have their, at least have their master's degree?
About 40% at last count.
40%? Is that normal? Is that high? Is that?
I can only speak to the districts I've been part of, but between 25 and 50% is probably about average. So we're, we're doing well. Yep.
Okay. All right, all in favor of that motion, say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item C, we will acknowledge assurance and of compliance with state and federal law. I don't think we need to do anything else there. Okay, item D. Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the, the resolution establishing parameters for bond refunding.
Okay. Second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Don't fall asleep. Resolution relating to general obligation school building refunding bonds, Series 2025A, authorizing the issuance and sale thereof and providing for credit enhancement with respect thereto. Be it resolved by the Wasika, or the, excuse me, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 829, Wasika, Minnesota, the district as follows. Section 1, Authorization Purpose. The Board hereby authorizes the issuance and sale of its general obligation school building refunding bonds, Series 2025A, or such other series designation as deemed appropriate in the approximate principal amount of $19,050,000, the bonds. The proceeds of the bonds will be used together with any additional funds of the district which might be required to refund in advance of maturity and prepay on February the 1st, 2026, the redemption date. All or a portion of the outstanding maturities of the district's general obligation school building bonds, Series 2015A, dated as of December the 30th, 2015, and issued in the original principal amount of $28,070,000, the refunded bonds. The purpose of refunding the refunded bonds is to achieve debt service savings. Section 2, Solicitation of Proposals, Approval of the Sale of the Bonds. The district has retained Aylers and Associates Incorporated in Roseville, Minnesota, Aylers, as its independent municipal advisor in connection with the sale of the bonds. Aylers is authorized to solicit proposals for the bonds in accordance with Minnesota statutes, Section 475.60, Subdivision 2, Paragraph 9. In consultation with Aylers, the superintendent or director of business services and any board member, the pricing committee, are hereby authorized to approve the sale of bonds and execute a bond purchase agreement for the bonds with the purchaser, provided that the refunding results in a debt service future value savings of $200,000, the parameter. Section 3, Award or Board Ratification of Sale. Upon approval of the sale of the bonds by the pricing committee, the Board will take action at a regularly scheduled or special meeting thereafter to adopt a bond resolution prepared by the district's bond council, ratifying the sale of the bonds, and incorporating the terms and conditions with respect thereto. The Board is also authorized to meet at, at the time and place specified in the official statement for the bonds to receive and consider proposals for the purchase of the bonds, provided the parameters set forth in section 2 above are met. Excuse me. Section 4, Official Statement Proposals. Aylers is authorized to prepare and distribute an official statement for the bonds to open, read, and tabulate proposals for presentation to the Board. Section 5, State Credit Enhancement Program. The district hereby covenants and obligates itself to notify the Commissioner of the Department of Education of the State of Minnesota, the Commissioner, of a potential default in payment of principal and interest on the bonds and to use the provisions of Minnesota statutes, Sections 126C.55, to guarantee payment of the principal and interest on the bonds when due. The district further covenants to just, to deposit with the registrar or any successor paying agent three days prior to the date on which a payment is due, an amount sufficient to make the payment or to notify the Commissioner that it will be unable to make all or a portion of the payment. The registrar for the bonds is authorized and directed to notify Commissioner if it becomes aware of a potential default in the payment of principal or interest on the bonds or if on the day, two business days prior to the date a payment is due on the bonds, there are insufficient funds to make that payment on deposit with the registrar. The district understands that as a result of its covenant to be bound by the provisions of Minnesota statutes, Sections 126C.55, the provisions of that section shall be binding as long as any bonds of this issue remain outstanding. The district further covenants to comply with all procedures now and hereafter established by the Departments of Management and Budget and Education of the State of Minnesota pursuant to Minnesota statutes 126C.55, Subdivision 2C, and otherwise to take such actions as necessary to comply with that section. The Chair, Clerk, Superintendent, or Business Manager is authorized to execute any applicable Minnesota Department of Education forms.
Can stop there.
So I guess we vote, all in favor of?
It's a resolution, so it should be a roll call.
Roll call?
I didn't put roll call on here, but it's a resolution, so it should be.
Alyssa Bowers?
Yes.
Darren Gruger?
Yes.
Scott Demel?
Yes.
Anne Margot?
Yes.
Grant Shepherd?
Yes.
Charlie Greve?
Yes.
Dave Dunn?
Yes. We're good?
Okay, thank you.
All right. All right, motion for item E.
I'll make a motion to approve the 26, 27, and 27, 28 school year calendars.
Second.
Anything on?
You know, these are the years with the late Labor Days, so we've discussed the option of when we're going to start or when we want to end. And, you know, these are the proposals for right now and we'll continue to evaluate going forward, how we want to continue to improve or alter if we need to, but for right now, that's what we have in front of you.
Okay.
We talked about these at a couple meetings ago and are they basically the same as what we had covered then?
They are. And I, in the listening sessions, there was a little bit of feedback from the intermediate school about considering a, a, before Labor Day start down the road at some point. That came up from them. That's the only session I've heard it from thus far. Again, just having met with Hartley and WIS. But again, that's, that's the feedback I've had so far.
Okay, all in favor of that motion, say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Motion for item F.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2025 to 2027 agreements with independent contract employees.
Second. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Motion for item G.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2025, 2027 master agreement with community ed paraprofessional staff.
Second.
All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Motion for item H.
I will make a motion to approve the 2026, 2029 superintendent contract.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Motion for item I.
I'll make a motion to approve the reviewed contracts, 606 Textbooks and Instructional Materials, 606-1 Procedure for Handling Questioned Materials, 610 Field Trips, 614 School District Testing Plan and Procedure, and 518 DNR, DNI Orders.
Okay. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Motion for item J.
I'll make a motion to approve the revised policy 624, as it was presented prior and shown.
I'll second.
Okay. Now I'll say, yeah, this is an updated, this is an updated copy based on new law, what we're allowed to do for online instruction, so this is, it's a new policy covering many of the same things.
Okay, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item K, Acknowledge Acceptable Use Policy and Compliance with Children's Internet Protection Act. And you've already talked about that. Anything else? Nope. Okay. Motion for item L.
I'll make a motion to approve the revised employee handbook.
Second. Thank you. Tell me, second? Second? Okay, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Motion for item M.
Motion to approve wrestling, Kinder Coffee fundraiser.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion there, anything? No?
No, they're getting ready to do a fundraiser and as we, they didn't quite have it all wrapped up before the last board meeting, so putting it to you now.
Okay, thank you. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. And finally, motion for item N.
I'll make a motion to approve the staff sharing with web.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. Anything there?
Just to clarify that, that's, that's Jeff Wagner as the special education leadership. So annually, we approve that we, we share his contract with our, I think, I think New Richmond came last month and depending on how they get it done in their processes, it comes to us after that, so.
Okay, thank you. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next workshop meeting, November the 6th. Next regular business meeting will be on November the 20th. Anything else?
I did get a text from Joe Hedervar. Ellie, she did qualify for state, girls team got sixth and boys finished in 12th. So a pretty good showing today. Yeah, very good.
All right, motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank yous.